Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. Let's call it to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director/Authority Member Christ.
Present.
Mann.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be by Pastor Jerry Furso from Lancaster Baptist Church. Hey, Jerry.
Let's pray together. Father, we come before you and we have so much to be thankful for. We thank you, Lord, for our country and the liberties that we enjoy as Americans. We do thank you for the sacrifice of those that have fought so courageously on the foreign field for our freedom. And, Lord, we do thank you for them. We thank you for their sacrifices. Lord, we're thankful for their families that are willing to sacrifice also. And, Father, we thank you for your blessings upon this land. We thank you for our city. And, Lord, we thank you for what this city stands for. We thank you for our city leaders. We do pray that you'd give each of them wisdom and guidance, Lord, as they oversee the affairs of this city. And, Lord, we do pray that you would continue to bless this city, make it a wonderful place to raise our families and to live. And, Lord, we realize that anything that we enjoy that's good in this city, it comes from your hand. And we do recognize that, and we do thank you and praise you for that. And we ask this now, in Jesus' precious and holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Christ, you want to...
Please stand and place your hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, we have a presentation from the Vice Mayor and Rhonda Perez. Not... Is it a presentation, or is it a...
This is just from Rhonda Perez, the first one. It's a... It's a... I'd like to report. Talk about the Boulevard.
Okay. You're going to update us on the Boulevard, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm excited to stand before you tonight to talk briefly about the Boulevard event, which is the third large-scale downtown event to take place on our newly renovated Boulevard. For the past six years, the Parks Department, Parks Recreation and Arts, in conjunction with Public Works and many other of the city's departments, we've been hosting events on the Boulevard. The intent of this effort originally was to prove downtown as a viable location for activities and recreation. Now, with the commitment that the city has made related to downtown revitalization and under your leadership, we've proven the Boulevard as a destination in and of itself for the Antelope Valley. On October 30th specifically, the Boulevard, Boulevard, as most people call it, Halloween and Harvest Festival, this brand-new event took place that was born out of a staff retreat that took place back in May, similar to Celebrate America and also the upcoming Magical Boulevard Christmas. This event was far more well-attended and more successful than we could have ever imagined. Our best estimate is about 30,000 people that attended. It's the largest concentration of people on the Boulevard in a four-hour period that we've experienced. They were excited to be there, to participate in carnival games, haunted hay rides. You can see that from the pictures, just the amount of... The sheer amount of people that were there. The Boulevard businesses handed out more than 100,000 pieces of candy in the first hour and a half. And as a result, we ran out of candy much more quickly than we anticipated, so we sent some people down to Walmart, one of our local businesses, and purchased about another 25,000 pieces of candy. It's about 7:00 o'clock that night. Boulevard restaurants ran out of product. They reported sales over $1,000 in the first hour of the event. One of our community partners, Sierra Toyota, crushed 500 pounds of apples into cider, and they donated all the money from those proceeds to buy wheelchairs for disabled veterans. So we're very proud of that. Our goals with our events are twofold. They provide entertainment for the community and a tremendous marketing opportunity for the Boulevard businesses. So helpfully, these efforts stabilize the local Boulevard. And we really try to not bring in outside vendors. We try to keep everything local so that all of our businesses can benefit from that. One of the most exciting things we did that night was the recreation of Thriller. So I think everybody saw that. It was a huge hit, a lot of fun. The cast was really great. But what I'm most proud about this event is the amount of teamwork and effort that goes into it. We partnered with over 50 local vendors, businesses, and community groups, including Walmart, the Boulevard businesses, Valleywide Dental, Sierra Toyota, and others. And in the Parks Recreation and Arts Department, we're very fortunate to be the implementers of these community events and realize that it would not be possible without all the other city departments. Finance, who puts through a million purchase requisitions for us in a very short time and processes a lot of checks. Public Works, who shuts down the street and sweeps the street. HR, who works with us on insurance. So it really is a group effort. And also Communications, who gets this regional coverage for these events. But in particular, I would like to thank Public Works and the Parks Department. Some of them are here tonight if they withstand, so they can be recognized for the work that they put into this event. So and of course, the City Council, who paves the way with the budget and approves our ability to put on these events. So thank you to everyone who made this event so successful. And I'm really pleased to report that the sheriffs had no problems reported that night either, with the exception of one little crazy character that evening. Thank you.
Katie didn't give anybody a hard time.
For the record, that would be our Vice Mayor. He went as an Armenian pirate.
And that's my daughter Katie. She's my partner pirate there.
Did everybody here go to that event? Anybody miss it? Who all went? Wasn't it magnificent? I was just overwhelmed. I... I... You know, certainly, I can't say enough about the staff who put it together. They responded to what could have been a crisis situation and made it a wonderful situation. I mean, when you plan for 6,000, you get 30,000. You know, there's a pucker factor there. Especially when you run out of... When you run out of candy. It was... But I... Most of all, I... You know, I can't say enough about the citizens of Lancaster who participated. There was a sense of community that evening that I don't ever remember experiencing to that extent before. And, you know, the idea that anybody would cause a problem was just abhorrent to everybody. It was truly a community family night, and everybody there was engaged. It was... Made me feel really good. And I want to thank everybody involved and everybody who attended. Okay, moving on. Tonight, we have the National Children's Study, which is done in conjunction with UCLA and I guess... Are you guys going to tell us a little bit about it? Okay, good. Come on up with me. This is really, really, really cool, because I think at the end of it, there's going to be some changes in the way the nation does their health care. The National Children's Study Organization, we have Janice Pettis, Ali...
The guy.
Come on up. And Armando De Leon. Today's children are faced with a variety of chronic conditions stemming from the complex interaction of environmental exposures and genetic factors. The National Children's Study will examine the effects of environmental influences on health and development of more than 100,000 children across the country from birth until age 21, making it the largest, most important study of children's health and development ever conducted in the United States. The data generated by the National Children's Study will form the scientific cornerstone for children's health policy for generations to come. And recognition of that, Lancaster has been chosen one of the cities that they're going to study, where they're going to follow our kids from birth until 21. It's... For those of you who are familiar with the Farmington Study that was done years ago and is still ongoing, most of the science that we know about how health conditions develop and heart disease came out of the Farmington Study. This is going to be comparable to that, but for children, right? More importantly, it's connected us... We're all friends now.
Yeah.
And we're developing new programs. One of the things that I'll be meeting with two of the premier researchers at UCLA on childhood obesity, inviting them to come to Lancaster and helping us with childhood obesity in Lancaster. And that's just one of the things that I think will grow from this. Whenever we can focus the scientific community and put their eyes on us, the only thing that can happen is good stuff, especially in regards to medical care of our children. And I can't thank you enough, and we will do whatever we can to assist you. And we have a presentation for you.
You use this to get grants.
And if you'd like to say something, go ahead and take them. Okay? Thank you.
Mayor Paris, honored City Council members, Antelope Valley Partners for Health, and residents of the great city of Lancaster, on behalf of Los Angeles Ventura Study Center of the National Children's Study, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. The National Children's Study is the largest study of environmental influences on children's health and development ever conducted in the U.S. The study will help us better understand the causes of some of the major childhood diseases such as asthma, obesity, and diabetes. The city of Lancaster has a rich cultural history, which is reflected in the individuals that live here. We are launching the study here in Lancaster very soon, and many families will receive an invitation to participate in the study by mail. We ask families to complete the confidential survey and mail it back to us. Thank you again, Mayor Paris and Councilmembers, for your support of the National Children's Study, working together for children's health.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Smith, who's going to tell us about the American Graphic Design Award for the Boulevard, which is something he created.
Yeah, a while back ago...
Not the award, but we got the award for.
A while back ago, we were working on the branding for the Boulevard. And because I wore a couple hats and I have a design firm, and I sit here, and I also teach at the college, I was able to put together a team of people, and we worked under my firm and had some college students come in. We had a lot of stakeholders, like Maria Elena from Lemon Leaf, Josh Mann, who was with the Boulevard Association at the time, Heather Kennedy, and a number of other stakeholders. And we worked together to create this brand that we call the Boulevard. And you can see the street signs that we have out here now and the logo that we use and the tagline, "Destination for Your Senses." And it was really just a great collaboration, and it was great that my firm was able to be able to work with everybody. And this year, my firm and the city of Lancaster, we won the American Graphic Design Award that's presented by Graphic Design USA. It's going to be published in the October... I mean, the December issue. And so I have a certificate to present to the city, so I'm not going to walk down there. I'll just give it to you.
On that note, I'd make a motion that we excuse Councilman Mann.
For a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any agenda items to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt the agency consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Any items on the council consent calendar to be removed?
I'd like to request that we remove CC 5. I'm going to recuse myself on that. I think legally, I could still vote, but just for the air of... The air on the side of caution, because I teach there part-time as an assistant professor.
Well, that is really cautious. Okay, with the exception of CC 5, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second.
It's unanimous. Councilman Smith has left the room. Is there a motion to approve CC 5?
I'll make a motion we approve CC 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Councilman Smith, you want to come back? We'll now open the public hearing regarding... Public hearing item number one and hear the staff report from Brian Ludicki, Director of Planning.
Mayor Paris, members of the City Council, the item that's before you for consideration is an amendment to the zoning code that would change the process for certain wind energy systems in the city's rural residential zones, specifically the RR1 and RR2.5 zones. The city of Lancaster actually initially adopted requirements for wind energy systems into its zoning code back in 1983. Essentially, what it required at that time was the approval of a conditional use permit for any wind energy system that was installed. Since that time, obviously, technology has taken a number of great strides forward in wind energy systems. The city, over the last year, has been reviewing and modifying where appropriate its requirements for the installation of these systems. As you'll recall, we adopted changes approximately a year ago in regards to small vertical-axis wind turbines in residential zones and also the allowance of co-location within certain commercial and industrial zones. This particular request comes to you directly as a result of inquiries that we have received from residents within our city, asking about the process that we currently have for putting certain wind energy systems in rural residential zones. That conditional use permit requirement, a cost of approximately $8,200, is quite a deterrent to the use and installation of these systems. What we are proposing and what has been reviewed and recommended to you by the Planning Commission is establishing a process for smaller systems of this type that would not go through a conditional use permit process. Instead, it would go through a director's review process, meaning that the staff would review and evaluate the proposal. There would be a provision to allow limited notification to immediate neighbors, so that they would have any opportunity to comment on the proposal and also would make them aware of it. Staff would consider these comments and then make a decision. The time process for this would be approximately 15 to 20 days, as opposed to the current conditional use permit process of about two to three months. And the cost for this, as we've recommended to you, would be a fee of approximately $350, as opposed to the current $8,200. We feel that this would be a reasonable approach to encouraging the use of alternative energy within our city. Certainly, that's something that the city has attempted to encourage among its residents. And given the interest that we've received from people who live in our more rural areas of the city, we feel this would be an appropriate approach. And we therefore are recommending to you the approval of the amendment to the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Councilmembers. Just wanted to quickly update you guys on the aesthetics of the current wind systems that are out on the market. Historically, a wind turbine has been associated with something of a visual nuisance, something of a windmill with a big tail boom sticking out. The latest generations of wind turbines are tailless, they're much quieter than before, and the tower that they sit on is a straight monopole tower rather than a pyramid lattice type of structure. And I'm hoping to see the city of Lancaster well on its way to become the alternative energy capital of the world, not only in solar but in wind as well. As you know, there's prevalent wind out here, and wind blows at night as well where solar doesn't. So that's it. Thank you. I thank you for considering adopting this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 954, and we determine that the application fee for NCWES would be the same as established for the director's review, category B.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number two. Dave McEwen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, public hearing number two concerns adoption of an interim urgency...
Wait a minute, we can waive this. We don't have any cards.
Yeah, we can waive it.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the interim urgency ordinance number 955.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to new business. Director Robert Neal. Thought you were going to get out of it, didn't you? This is what we wanted to do.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here to report that the building stimulus incentive program that you initiated in February has been successful and to request your consideration in extending the program to June 30th of next year. That's the City Clerk telling me I better hurry up. As you may recall, this program reduced development impact fees 20% for new construction throughout the city and 30% for new construction, specifically occurring within the Lancaster Boulevard Downtown District. The goals for the program are to stimulate the local economy, create construction jobs, and generate revenue for the city. There was a nice article in the Valley Press September 28, 2010. I don't intend for you to try to read this, but I pulled out a relevant statistic.
That was a fact.
According to the article, Lancaster permit issuances are up 38.4% from last year, while Palmdale's numbers were down 36.3%. I believe this program has had a lot to do with this success. We issued from February to October this year 242 housing permits compared to 117 during the same months in 2009 for an increase of over 100%. We estimate that from housing alone, $51 million of construction is occurring in our community, translating to 225 jobs. By this, I mean the equivalent of 225 people will be employed for a year's period. Bringing this point home for me was a meeting with Darrell Adams, owner of Darrell's Plumbing. By way of background, Darrell has been pulling plumbing permits for at least 15 years that I know of. He said earlier this year, he and his wife were discussing whether they would have to close their business. Darrell told me that he was able to get plumbing work as a result of our program, and that has allowed him to keep his doors open. Darrell's Plumbing is a Lancaster business, and Darrell wanted me to thank you. From February to October this year, we have collected $3.3 million in permit revenue compared to $1.9 million for the same time period the previous year. This means that we have $1.4 million more than last year to make drainage improvements, fix streets, and provide city services. The building stimulus incentive program has been successful, but our economy continues to struggle, and I believe that extending this innovative program will continue to help our community. I respectfully request your consideration in extending the program to June 30, 2011. That concludes my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Pelka, did you notice I called you first?
Maybe I'm the only card you have. I don't know.
Well, that...
I wore green for...
There is that.
I wore green today in honor of the biker clubs in the neighborhood here. First off, does this program for developers also include the individual who's building a home on their own, but not a developer, somebody who's building 30 or 40 houses?
Mr. Mayor, the answer to that question is yes. It's for anybody.
Anybody, okay. The other question is, the money usually raised for development of fire department use and also for schools, is that being diminished?
No, these are only city impact fees, not by or school.
Okay, because that wasn't specified in the... In your... On the agenda, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Any discussion first? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-70.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Once again, the city staff has exceeded our expectations. I'm a numbers guy, and when the numbers start showing that we're doing is working, it feels good. Okay, City Attorney, new basements, item number two.
Actually, I think Mr. Cottle is going to start.
Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, at your last meeting, October 26, you authorized staff to enter into power purchase agreements with Lancaster School District, East Side School District, for the construction of solar panels to be built on their facilities and the energy generated to be sold to those facilities themselves. The benefit to the project, as you recall, is the... Not only the savings of electricity costs to the school, but also a revenue generation component for the city for the operation and maintenance of its municipal utility as well as those facilities. Tonight is a... The process by which we begin the issuance of bonds for the generation of the revenue to construct these facilities. And with that, I'll turn it over to Barbara Boswell, as well as Dave McEwen, to discuss the details of those bond funds.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and Councilmembers. And of course, I get the fun part again. I always get to have the fun stuff in front of you. So tonight, we're asking for your authorization to move forward in issuing approximately $35 million in bonds. That's $35 million that will go into construction projects in the city of Lancaster. The bonds represent a partnership not only between the city of Lancaster and school districts, but also the federal government and the state of California, because the bonds that are being issued are Build America bonds, which come with a interest incentives from the federal government. And the state also provides incentive payments for the first five years that energy is produced. So it's a... So it's a partnership between many different agencies. The schools benefit from lower energy rates. The payments that they pay to us will then be used to make the payments on the bonds, so the city won't be out of pocket for those bonds. The revenues that are generated by the project will pay for the bond payments. There will be sufficient money that will exceed the amount of the bond payments that then we can use in the future to upgrade and to do additional solar projects. We are very proud of the partnership that we have formed for this project and look forward to more to come in the future. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have. I should say related to the bond part.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said I should say in relation to the bond issue.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add, for some clarification, is that as we move forward through the rating process and through the marketing of the bonds, there is a chance that there will be a mix of tax-exempt bonds and BABS as well, and, or straight taxable bonds. Whatever produces the best result for the city and the school districts is the mix of those bonds that we will know, but that's really market-driven, and we're, the BABS program goes away at the end of this year under current legislation, and so there's going to be somewhat of a rush to market towards the end of this year by a lot of issuers of BABS. And so it may prove that it is more economical to do it as a different combination of those bonds, but I want to make sure that that was clear to you, that we're not locked in to doing this entirely as BABS.
Thank you. Any questions? Scott Pelka?
I personally do not see why the city has to involve itself in installing solar panels on its school, and then in the process charging the school money for the power, and then turning around and profiting about $12 million over a period of, what was it, 25 years? The city basically flees in the school district out of money for the benefit of the city. Now, it would seem to me the school district would be better off negotiating these long-term solar panel leases with other companies themselves, putting the panels on, cutting out the middleman, and then they could save the money themselves. The other question is, why is a city involving itself in selling power to somebody when the city itself is not a public utility?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 10-71.
I'll second.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on. To the Lancaster Financing Authority part of the agenda, and Mr. McEwen, you're on again.
It's the same report, Mr. Mayor, it's just a resolution-
You know, Parks and Rec, they give us slides and, you know.
You don't want to see slides on a bond financing.
[laughing] That's very good.
Following the principles of Steve Jobs, it's just not going to work.
I will shut up.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number FA10-01.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, council agenda. Oh, that's me. Council agenda, item one. I want some direction from the staff in the next couple months, you know, I don't know that there's anything pressing on it. There's a lot of concern about the red light cameras that people seem to be expressing. I'm assuming that those red light cameras have saved a substantial number of lives, but that's a simple statistical analysis that I want to look at. The other thing I want to look at, though, is, is there a way we can achieve the same reduction in fatalities without the same number of tickets? I mean, the one thing I saw in Orange County was that the voters and the people think they're unfair. You know, whether they are or they're not unfair, I don't know, I don't have an opinion, but they don't like them, you know, they don't like that, the whole idea of them. I don't want these things to become revenue sources for the city, that we then become dependent on, and then we start putting more up, and you know, I mean, it's an easy, it's an easy way to make money, I mean, let's face it, and I don't want us to go down that path. And so I'm thinking perhaps a way to do it is to not have the cameras of, I mean, my understanding of it now is that we have somebody who reviews the tapes of everybody who, you know, runs a red light, and they determine whether or not, in fact, they ran the red light, and then they send out the ticket. We might be able to achieve the same safety benefit by doing that intermittently, doing it randomly, you know, random one day out of the week, maybe two days out of the week, whatever. I mean, there probably would be a statistical model that would give us the same results with having the least impact on the citizens in regards to the actual tickets, meaning you never know when it's going to be on, you never know when somebody's looking at it, and substantially reduce the number of people getting the tickets. It's just an idea for discussion, but when I see something pass by 70%, I realize that, you know, we need to get ahead of this, and see if we can save, I mean, if in fact we're saving lives, and I suspect we are, because it's the T-bone accidents that kill people, you know, you can withstand a huge rear-end accident, you can withstand a moderate head-on. What you can't, what you can't survive, or survive and live any quality of life afterwards is a high-speed T-bone accident. We're just not built to do that, and, you know, most of our cases involve that, so I know a little bit about it. But if we could have the same reduction in those accidents with the least impact on the driving public, we should look at it, and I'd like to know what you all think.
Mr. Mayor, I invited John White. Could he come up and give us a report on?
No.
Of course he could.
He is the deputy that is in charge of the red light cameras, and he can tell us how they work, what it does, and I asked him to put together a little bit of statistics to give us.
So when you guys go through those lights, you just wave to John?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm, I don't have any slides either, so I'm not here to-
You should have brought us some video, you know, I imagine there's a few people in this room, we could have featured.
I'm not here to try to sway you in one way or another, this is obviously a decision for the city to make. Councilmember Chris asked me to put together some numbers and bring them to you tonight so that you can make an informed decision on what you want to do with this. I can tell you that in the four years that the system has been operational, collisions have been reduced at the intersections affected by the cameras by a substantial number. At Avenue K and 10th Street West, there's been a 25% reduction in red light-related collisions, and a 9% reduction in overall collisions. At Avenue K and Division Street, there's been a 50% reduction in red light camera-related collisions, and a 41% reductions, reduction in overall collisions. At Avenue J and 15th Street West, there's been a 73% reduction in red light collisions, and a 26% reduction in overall collisions. And at Avenue L and 20th Street West, there's been a 76% reduction in red light-related collisions, and a 46% reduction in overall collisions. So I believe the system works, I believe it's one tool in the city's toolbox, they've done a lot of things that have really improved traffic safety, dedicated left-turn lanes, smart crosswalks, the list goes on and on as far as the different items that have been improved in the city to make it safe for the motoring public. I do believe that this is a good system, I understand nobody likes getting a ticket, I've been a police officer for, be 26 years on Sunday, so I've given out my fair share, and I understand nobody likes receiving a citation. But I believe this is a good system, I believe it does what it's supposed to do just based on the numbers that I ran today, that was four years prior to the system being implemented and the four years since. So, again, that's just a piece of information for you to use to make whatever decision you're going to make.
What kind of reduction on other intersections that don't have it?
Your Honor, I'd have to go back and run numbers on other intersections, I was limited in my time, so I chose to just pull the numbers for the intersections that are affected.
That's something I'd like to see, I'd like to see a comparison-
Absolutely.
You know, just so we could really isolate the effect of these particular cameras.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, I would like an opinion from you guys, you know, I want you to think about it, talk about it, do we accomplish the same thing by doing it randomly?
In my opinion, I think you'd be hard-pressed to do that. I understand the concept that you're throwing out here as far as you don't know when it's going to be on or when it's going to be off, I just, I don't know how that would work. Not being involved with the contract or anything like that, I don't know what the criteria is from Red Flex or from the city in order to have it turned on, turned off, I wouldn't be able to answer that. In my opinion, it's kind of an all-or-nothing thing, you either have this system or you don't.
But you're the one who actually reviews it to decide who gets a ticket.
I am, that is correct.
Could you walk us through that process?
Sure. What happens is, is when the system is activated, it captures four photographs and a video. There's a speed threshold that a car has to be going as it passes over the loops that are cut into the roadway in order to activate the system. And what happens is, is that information is stored on a computer at the location of the incident. Every day, at intervals of anywhere from a half hour to an hour, it's downloaded via virtual private network to Red Flex in Arizona, where they run their quality control checks on it, they fill in the driver's information, and then they send that information back to me over the computer. I then sit down, virtually every day there's incidents in the queue, and I review those incidents, and I'm looking for things such as, did the car just go a little bit beyond the limit line and stop? In that case, I would reject that incident, a citation wouldn't be issued. Overall, I would say I probably discard just as many citations as I send out. I mean, there's people out there that are activating the system, they're just not aware of it, because we can't send a warning notice, all we can do is send out the citation. But once I determine a violation has occurred, I accept the incident, it's then sent back to Red Flex where they print up the citations and they're mailed out to the violator.
Question, Mr. Mayor, why can't you send out a warning notice?
We send out warning notices for the first 30 days, that's part of California law when it comes to the red light camera systems. I don't know that there's something that can be done to issue warnings for violations like I just described. I don't know if there's something that they can do to where I can have the choice between sending a citation or sending a warning. And I'm afraid that might come back on me where somebody might come up and say, well, you sent a warning to this guy, I don't want it to become a racial issue potentially, I don't want it to become, you sent a warning to your friend, but you sent a citation to this guy that you didn't know. Having that in place would potentially create problems for me, and I'm not sure that that would be a good thing to do.
Do we send a copy of the picture?
Yeah, every citation has a copy of all four pictures, there's a website address that the violator can access, it's listed on the citation with the packet of papers that comes with it, and they can actually review the digital photos, which are always going to be sharper than the photographed, or the copied photos, and they can review the video of the violation itself.
Is there any reason why we couldn't just have some random thing in the Sheriff's Department where you only review the ones on Tuesday this week or the ones Wednesday and next week?
Again, that would be something that would have to be discussed between the city and Red Flex, I don't know contractually what's involved with that, but that would certainly be something that you could discuss with them, I don't know if they have, for lack of a better term, a part-time system.
There are some specific statutes that we need to review to see if we can do that. The only concern I have is, is that, you know, there is a notice requirement before you start enforcing it, and if you stop enforcing it and then start, you have to go back through the 30-day notice period again, you know, stuff like that, but it's things that we need to look at. I think these are all good ideas, we just need to look at them and see if they can be done under the state law.
Are they currently treated as vehicle code violations?
It is a vehicle code violation.
Is there some way to turn it into a civil violation?
I don't think so, but we can look at that as well.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the city of Los Angeles looked into doing that, making it a municipal code violation versus vehicle code, and I believe vehicle code trumps municipal code violation for this type of thing.
The preemption.
Because that was certainly discussed, because of the right-turn violations carrying the same fines as a straight-through or a left-turn violation, they tried to take that over and it was shot down.
I see. Well, I want you all to think about it and come up with some alternative options for us to consider.
Yes, sir.
Because what I don't want to do is start seeing people dying because we didn't act.
Correct.
You know, and I suspect that if we don't act, eventually this thing's going to hit the ballot, and they're going to take them all away. You know, and that quite literally is going to mean people dying, if the numbers you give me are accurate, you know, citywide.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Can you talk about the fatality portion of it, the reduction?
I know when I started the current job I'm in, I'm the traffic team leader, when I started this job five years ago, we had 27 fatalities that year. Last year, we had six. So again, I think the city's overall view of traffic enforcement is outstanding, we're all moving in the right direction, implementing new programs. I know the traffic engineers are constantly looking at newer, better ways of doing things, and again, I think this is just one of the tools in those, in that toolbox that's helping. My concern is if we start taking tools away that are being utilized in a positive way, that it might have a negative impact on fatalities, or on traffic collisions in general, which obviously would involve fatalities too, so.
Just to remind us, how long has the program been implemented now?
We just passed four years.
Four years.
Correct.
Okay. Mayor, let's, Mayor Paris?
I had a suggestion.
Yes.
I know that, I had a couple of people talk to me about the situation that was going on with the red light, and I know that it's a breakdown, the city of Lancaster gets a portion of it, and there are two other entities, I believe, that get a portion of it. So, and I really don't think that that would be fair, because I'd be the one that'd get caught going through the red light on the Tuesday that it was on versus the Wednesday that, anyway, that doesn't sound fair to me, but it might be something that we could do is to reduce what the city of Lancaster charges.
We would be, I think there's a lot here, we need to look at the financing of it, that's certainly an idea, also, we need to bring the traffic engineering folks in who can answer some of it. I agree with the mayor, I think we need to bring you back some options, that consider all has been a good discussion, I think we need to look and bring it back to you in a couple months.
My concern is just, I don't want to lose it. I mean, I don't want to lose a life-saving thing if it's working. And in regards to the overall job you guys are doing, you know, injury accidents are down over 36%, but, you know, I mean, let's face it, that's part of my business is that.
Yes, sir.
And so we watch those statistics very closely. What you guys have done in this community is incredible, I don't know of anywhere else that's occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Mr. Mayor, I liked your idea of saying that, you know, can you affect the behavioral change in other way than just giving out citations, and the idea of picking and choosing a different day randomly, but I think if we could figure out a way that you give the person a notice, maybe keep their plate in a database and you go through again or something, that vehicle, then that way, because then they get that feedback, it's like an officer that, you know, they don't give out tickets every time, sometimes they give them a warning, and that's, okay, wait a minute, I can't, I got to watch that, next time I'm going to get a ticket, and in that way, they get that feedback. Just something else for staff to maybe consider.
I like it, and that's easy to do, I mean, it's a simple algorithm. We may want to involve the state assemblyman in this, and when we get a state senator, we can involve him too. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh.
See you too.
I'm concerned. I'm concerned about what has occurred in the last two weeks in regards to that. ABTA, just as a little bit of background, is a joint agreement between Los Angeles County, Palmdale, and Lancaster to provide bus services and transportation- Palmdale, and Lancaster to provide bus services and transportation services in the Antelope Valley. That is how Lancaster has a bus system for its citizens. In, for over, for several years now, or at least over two years, I believe, there have been employees complaining about improprieties within AVTA that would, should put people on notice that were substantial, both financial and other improprieties in the way the organization was being run. When the county investigates and finds out there's substance to this, that the taxpayers' money is being misappropriated, and, you know, I can say a lot of things because I'm not on the AVTA, so I don't have to worry about personnel issues. All I have to worry about is the city of Lancaster. And what I'm seeing is that certainly money was being stolen when you take vacations on taxpayer credit cards. That's stealing. I mean, let's not call it anything else. You're stealing. The, when people are hired at $45,000 a year and end up making $105,000 three years later without any change in job description, that ought to put somebody on notice that our money is being misappropriated. When employees are writing letters saying there's an inappropriate relationship between the CEO and this person. I've seen the letters. This was done. And so then when Marvin and Sherry and the county discover this, and there's an executive session to deal with it, and the representatives from our sister city, whose joint agreement, set the meeting, they set the meeting, they're going to have it in two days instead of one day. Well, you know, my warning bells go on and off, and that's why we put a deputy at the front door. And sure enough, 1:00 in the morning, the CFO is coming out of that building, who was subject of this investigation, and resigns a half hour later. You know, you don't have to be a genius to say something is terribly wrong. And then, our partner in this is the city of Palmdale, and the elected representatives that they put on this board are the mayor and Mr. Dispenza, who refused to come to the meeting with some nonsense about they didn't have all of the information. Well, let's be clear, that's why you have meetings. That's when you get the information. To get it any other way would be a violation of numerous laws about open meetings and, you know, I call it the barbecue law. But, I mean, people can be very sensitive about that Brown Act when it's meaningless and appear to not care at all when it's vitally important, such as this. And I wouldn't say anything about how Palmdale does their bus system, but this is our bus system that is now being affected. And when two-fifths of the board abandoned their post, and that's exactly what they did in any organization, that's what you would call it, the most critical meeting of the history of that organization is, took place where the executive director, his resignation was accepted, and an interim director was hired. I mean, how could you have a more important meeting? And for two-fifths of that board to refuse to go to the meeting, not somebody was sick, not there was a conflict, refused to go to that meeting. How is that acceptable leadership of our money? I mean, this is millions and millions and millions of dollars of the city of Lancaster's taxpayers. And I know it would probably be politically astute for me to sit here and say nothing, but that is just malfeasance, any way you look at it. It is just malfeasance. And then to go to the newspapers and suggest that those very same people who are the miscreants sue the AVTA when you're sitting on the board. I don't want to be on a board or have our city involved with an organization where that is the leadership. I think we should look seriously at separating from the AVTA with the county and providing our own bus service with the county, if that's possible. Or we should look at maybe electing the board of directors for AVTA. But, you know, it seems like it's just way too cozy of a relationship when the same people came out of, were employees of the city of Palmdale, were essentially appointed by the mayor of Palmdale. I mean, he brought them into this organization. And then when this is uncovered, he refuses to come to the meeting that investigates it. I do not think that it's in the best interests of Lancaster to be partnered with people who behave that way. I think that there is too much money at stake. This is how many people get to school, get to medical care, and get to work in the city of Lancaster, for us to be jeopardizing it in that way. And I would like to know what your thoughts are on the subject, and I would also like to know from city staff in the next couple of months, is it possible for us to separate from them? I also want to know what other joint powers agreements we have with the city of Palmdale where these same people are exercising leadership roles, because if they'll do it with AVTA, they'll do it with other organizations. I don't care if we disagree, but what I can't abide by is people abandoning their public duties because it's uncomfortable. I thought your opinion piece was dead-on, the two of you, as to what occurred. But I think it would be negligent on our part to sit silently about it. I mean, this is, when you, you know, there are salacious allegations of relationships with vendors that the people running this bus system were involved in, and there was never a hearing on it. I mean, yeah, now we're doing the investigation, now the DA is looking at it, but the fact remains, it was the citizens of Palmdale and Lancaster's money that was misappropriated and wasted and stolen. And we seem to be the only ones upset about it, along with the supervisor Antonovich's office. Do we really want to be partners with people that think that behavior's okay? Or condone it or protect it? Because that's what occurred, any way you look at it. And what I'm saying is, I don't want to, I do not want to sweep this under the carpet. I want a resolution so that it never happens again. We have a right to have full participation on boards that we are partners with. We should not be involved with board members who hide as soon as it gets uncomfortable or worse. I mean, I do not understand that behavior, nor has it been explained by the participants of it. Any comments?
Well, I'm in total agreement, and the first thing I thought when Mayor Ledford and Mr. Dispenza did not show up without a call, without any courtesy whatsoever as to why they weren't there, was dereliction of duty. And in my opinion, they violated their oath that they took to sit on that board to represent the citizens of the Antelope Valley. And I'm, I was very disappointed, and I felt like there was something that the board would have to eventually look at and maybe even them be relieved of those duties, but that's what the discussion is for.
I would take a totally different look at it. I would disagree with you that we should pull apart from the AVTA because it serves our community as a whole, and I think that we should do that. The problem is, is that the citizens of Palmdale aren't being represented. We are being represented. The county of Los Angeles is being represented. The citizens of Palmdale aren't being represented. And if they continue not to show up, that will affect them in the bus lines, how the money is spent. You will see that the city of Lancaster will get all the allocations for the money because we have the votes. They need to show up to protect the citizens of Palmdale. We are protecting the citizens of Lancaster. So, I would look at it in a totally different way and say that the citizens of Palmdale are not being represented. We are.
You know, I appreciate that, and I, you know, it has merit. And I also think, though, that a board is there to represent the interests of the organization as a whole. And we have a right to five or six or whatever the number of board members there are, all of their participation in the oversight of this. You know, it, I think people would be shocked if all of the allegations ever became totally public, and they'd certainly be shocked at the waste involved. I mean, these people can make $100,000 decisions of, you know, not charging somebody for this, not charging somebody for that. You know, my understanding that the warrants people were approving, meaning the checks that the board approved, were phonied up, you know, is the allegation, and I don't know if that's been proven yet, but those allegations were being made years ago, and nothing was done. Maybe we should look at the citizens of each city voting for it.
I need to make sure that everyone's aware that as soon as the city of Lancaster became aware of it, we did react.
No, I know that.
It wasn't, for years, as soon as we became aware of it, we did react.
You weren't on it for years.
I'm talking about the Lancaster.
All right. The, I don't know, I just find it an unacceptable situation that has to be resolved somehow, and I would like the city attorney to give me some options as to what we can do. You know, this whole idea of competing with Palmdale is not in our best interests, and it's not in our best interest to compete with them on these boards. Those boards were designed to serve the mutual interests of both cities, and for both cities to come together and thrive together in those selected areas, such as sanitation and AVTA, which is the transportation. It was not designed for us to compete with each other. Now, they have made it perfectly clear that there are areas they want to compete with us, and I'm fine with that. I like competition. Don't you all like competition? Seems like we're doing pretty good lately. You know, but when we define an area as being cooperative and to the mutual benefit, we need people on those boards who are actually going to do that, and we don't have that. And so I'd like some options. How do we fix it? Thank you. With that being said, oh, we have, wrong title? I always thought it was Seidel, but it's Titel.
It is Titel.
Huh?
It is Titel.
Without the S?
No, no S.
Right, right, okay.
Just a couple of words on that very issue. One of the things that the Antelope Valley Tea Party Patriots is getting more involved in is more of an oversight of what's going on in local government as well as national. We've had our hands full with national. Now we're going to get a breather. We're still going to be gearing up national till 2012, but we do have time, and we will make sure we have time to start looking a little closer at what's going on in local city government, municipal government. And I think one of the missing things that I noticed, like, in the article that this whole thing came out on, even our newspaper, for some reason, wants to take a Lancaster-Palmdale and it turned into another one of those red-blue things that they've done on the national level. And the whole problem that I see is, is that for some reason, we have lost our interest and accountability, and when we can't hold public officials, whether they be elected or appointed, to accountability, we lose everything. And it's our part that we're going to start playing to try to hold officials' feet to the fire. And a perfect example is this instance. And, you know, it's uncalled for. I don't think that there should ever be a time where two people on an important issue like this with the AVTA came up, were absent from their duties. It's unacceptable. And, you know, and it seems to be the attitude. The attitude is, well, it doesn't really make any difference if I'm there, even if I don't have an excuse, because nothing's going to happen about it. Well, you know what? We start to, we need to start making things happen about it and holding people accountable for what they're doing. And this is a perfect example. So, to separate Palmdale and Lancaster as far as the AVTA goes, I think that that takes a little study before we do something like that. I'd like to see what the reaching impact of doing a division like that would be before I would be so quick to want to make that happen. Just my two cents worth.
What do you think about electing the representatives?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't think, anytime there's an appointment, there's going to be things that are going to come of it that aren't really transparent. And, you know, when it's elected, you can't really say, you can say, oh, shucks, the wrong person got elected, but it still goes through the process that I think it needs to go to. It eliminates that cronyism effect.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Perez, in light of the situation and having to call emergency board meetings and closed sessions, et cetera, I have an obligation with my family that I will be out of town for a week and a half, and I think it would be wise that someone be appointed as an alternate. So how do we approach that, Mr. McEwen?
Well, that item's, it's related to the discussion, but it's not technically on the agenda. So I think if that is going to happen before our next meeting, then the council needs to add an emergency item to this agenda with a four-fifth vote, or in this case, a unanimous vote, to add that item and then appoint an alternate. Just by way of background, the joint powers agreement does provide for each city to appoint two of its members as members of the board for the JPA, along with one of its members as an alternate. And so, we have not appointed the alternate in the past, and I think that would be an order under the JPA agreement, but to do that, you're going to have to add it to the agenda with a unanimous vote tonight.
Is there a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'll move that we add that as an emergency item to the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous? I will take the seat as the alternate if the rest of you approve of that.
I'll nominate the mayor as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Well, the press ought to come to that meeting. Okay. City manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do, sir. The, we opened one more block of the boulevard today. There's two blocks remaining, which should be open by the end of the month. So we're able to open to Gadsden, I believe, today. The, appreciate the comments of the mayor and the council on the work of staff. I'm very, very proud to work with such great colleagues. We've talked about the boulevard, the municipal utility, all those, some of the other accomplishments. One thing that I'd like to turn it over to Kelvin Tynatongo to talk about very briefly is the Unite program that we had just this weekend. And it's a very uplifting program to see so many neighborhoods and people come together with projects to improve their surrounding, and the energy was, quite honestly, surprising to me in some of the events I attended. So Kelvin?
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this past weekend, we did have the Unite Lancaster program where we had 11 projects that were awarded out of 36 that were submitted by the residents themselves. We actually had folks that were either from the neighborhoods, either also with faith-based organizations, as well as nonprofit groups. As Mark said, there were quite a few people that were out at all different projects. Two of them that I thought really epitomized the whole concept of uniting our neighborhoods were the Catalyst Foundation's Community Garden, where they actually went out and reached out to the South Downtown District neighborhood, and they had about 60 folks out there digging trenches, building boxes, many of them actually from the neighborhood themselves. And as they ended the day, they welcomed back those same neighbors to come back and actually do the planning of the community garden and take a portion of that plot there to get them involved. that, that plot there to get them involved in there. Another project I thought really epitomized that was also the, in the Paiute area, Shirley Burgess had a block party where she closed down Sandcroft and invited all her neighbors to come out and meet people and get to know each other. And it was, it was actually pretty impressive to see people coming with their, their pots of side, side dishes there, where they, the Burgess's also cooked hot dogs. But to see the people actually coming in there, there were kids playing in the, in the street where it was blocked off. We had the deputy sheriffs there also, as well as our Lee Derico, our, our public safety manager, introducing the, the different activities or initiatives that they're going to be doing in the, in the neighborhood. But it was very uplifting. They had people there that were 30-year residents, as well as people there that had only been there for six months, getting to know each other, and talking about how they could help each other out. So that was the whole concept of the program. So we thought it was very successful. And we definitely want to thank the city council for allowing that to happen, as well as the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission, who we were working with, and certainly the sponsors who actually helped fund the programs.
It was a great day. It was, it was truly, it was an exciting day. I, I, you know, it seems like every week there's something different happening. It's, you guys are doing a tremendous job. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, or city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your comments, your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time does begin when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and your red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. You know, I'm proud every day to be a citizen of the city of Lancaster, but I was particularly proud today. I was down on the Boulevard, and the vitality down there, despite the construction, is amazing. I saw several multiple couples walking, husband and wife, just exploring the vitality. Kids were having fun. It was just exciting. And, you know, we all have ideas of how to make our city a better place. We have the abundance of the solar and the wind to work with, but I would particularly like to thank the city staff because you've made these things possible. You've worked out the intricacies and the relationships and found ways to do things. And that impresses me, it really does. And so with that, I just want to say goodnight and thank you all for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, David.
Nieto.
Nieto.
Eventually. Okay, so I had the pleasure of being at the Boulevard event. I was intrigued to notice I had to park about four blocks away, and walked on down, and I came in between, during that, excuse me, I came in through that narrow walkway next to Bank of America, and whoosh! That's the only way I could describe it. As soon as I caught sight of it, thousands of people in Halloween costume. I've never seen such a sight, not even at events down in Los Angeles. And Los Angeles draws some pretty big events. They don't compare. I couldn't get over it. I was, I was, I was giddy even. It was something, every sense was touched. And I did have some suggestions on how to improve future events on the Boulevard. I think we ought to make more use of the side streets. The games, there's a difference between games and vendors in terms of foot traffic. If we took the games and put them on the side streets, and then kept the vendors where they are on the main street, that might alleviate some of the crowding effect. Because by nature, people are going to stop at the game, at the games. Their children are going to be playing, the parents are going to be watching. It's just the way foot traffic works. And in terms of the Thriller, at my short stature of five foot five, I actually couldn't see it. I was a little sad. There was a very large crowd gathered there, and it also caused a bit of a logjam, people trying to pass in front of Bex to get from one side of the Boulevard to the other. So I'm thinking the Boeing Plaza would be a great place, that intersection and the Boeing Plaza itself, to host the major attractions, such as the Thriller dance. Because that's a natural place for people to congregate. And if we put in seating there, that would also alleviate some of it, so that there wouldn't just be a throng. And that's just some ideas that I had for improvement of future events. Make use of the side streets, have the major attractions on the Boeing Plaza intersection, and have the vendors, if we do open up the side streets, on the, on the side streets instead of on the Boulevard, I mean, not the vendors, the games. I have 42 seconds left, so I'll make use of the rest of my time to briefly address a concern of mine about traffic signals. I've noticed four specific intersections of Lancaster that are a bit of a problem. J-8, at the, at the intersections of 10th and 15th, Avenue K at the entrance to the ABC parking lot, and Trevor at Avenue I. The signals are simply too long. In each of them, the signals in the east-west direction, they're just simply too long, and they quite significantly affect the progress as you're coming up towards future lights. Thank you.
Could you take a look at that, Robert? Time those signals? Thank you. And Andrew, what we're going to be doing is, once the park, if the park ever gets done, are you sure we're fining them for being late? Okay, good. We're making some money on it. It, it's going to flow from the park onto the Boulevard, so that, that'll be the side street we, we use. So we're going to have a lot more space for all of that stuff as it develops. But it'll be, it'll, it'll be substantially improved space-wise once that happens. But, but yeah, we agree with you. We're, we're really packing people in there. Thank you.
And Andrew, thank you for being a positive criticism to the council. We appreciate that.
You know, there's a technique, you give somebody a positive first, then you give them the negative. They're much more receptive to the negative. Living proof. Latice Pugh?
I appreciate everyone for listening to me today or this evening. Overall, I've been here for 36 years. I've lived in Lancaster and Palmdale. I've enjoyed being here. I'm enjoying the new vitalization that's going on on Lancaster Boulevard. My concern as a citizen, though, seeing how my tax dollars go to make sure that this city is safe, is how I was treated. I live on the east side of Lancaster, and it was late evening. I was stopped. I didn't stop right away because my house was about five, five houses down. I pulled in my driveway, I opened my door so the cop could see across my lap and see that my hands was on the steering wheel. My door was open, there was another car in the driveway. The policeman approached, he was safe, he could feel, he felt safe, he even stated that. Long story short, I was arrested, and I was mistreated, and I didn't appreciate it. And I still haven't figured out to this day of why. I was not belligerent, I was not drunk, I was not inebriated, and I was in my driveway. I had valid ID, it was in my car. In the police report, it stated that I said that I did not have ID. But also in the police report, it stated that my driver's license was in my glove compartment. This is a great concern of mine. Because if I was treated like this, and I have not been in any trouble, I wasn't under any type of influence of anything, that was also stated on the police report, and for me to be arrested hurt me, and I was very disappointed as far as how my tax dollars are being spent, or the security of the United, or, excuse me, the security of Lancaster, or the citizens are being treated. This was on the schedule a couple of weeks ago. I was unable to be here, I just found out about it. But I do have the case, and I do have the police report to prove everything that I've said. I need some type of resolution, I'm looking for it, and I need some help with it because I did not appreciate it on no levels.
Thank you. Mr. Derico's at the back of the room. Mr. Derico, will you meet with Ms. Pugh and make certain that the, the appropriate complaints are filed and the appropriate investigation is undertaken? Thank you. Lyle Talbot. Now, Lyle, remember the rule about, you know, something positive first, you're, you're much more persuasive with it.
I'm trying to come up with one. But I will say that the last two blocks of Lancaster Boulevard, when I started up here in 1954 with the county surveyor, were gravel. So I do see an improvement there.
Thank you.
Okay. When I was a kid in Hollywood, I was out there hawking papers on the corner, kind of like this, you know? Extra, extra, read all about it. When I read all about this Abber and Paris incident at the gymnasium, I read through it, and I started marking up my paper. So I have a prepared statement. As a kid, I was hawking the newspapers, as I told you. And I used to tell my son that, this is not related yet, but you don't have to be six foot tall to be a big man. The city of Lancaster threw David Abber under the bus once before, and I quietly stood by out of loyalty to the sheriff's department for my 15 years plus as a volunteer. But I lost much respect for our then-captain for doing the city of Lancaster's dirty work. I will not stand by this time without saying my piece. I edited the Valley Press issue of October 28th, making comments on the adjoining page on the Paris-Abber assault in the local gym. Made copies of it and redistributed it to the following. One, the city manager. Two, the lieutenant at the sheriff's department. Three, the Valley Press editor. Four, the Valley Press reporter who wrote the story. Five, county supervisor. Six, the LA County District Attorney. And I've got no response so far. I would just state that assault and battery is an actual crime. Not to apologize for the act is a social crime. Not filing charges for that crime is criminal negligence, in my opinion. My advice to the mayor, and he hasn't asked for it, be a big man and apologize to Mr. Abber, and learn from your mistakes like most of the rest of us do. Thank you.
Gee, Lyle, I didn't know you were there. Thank you. We're going to adjourn now pursuant to an action taken by City Council Redevelopment Agency on August 10th. There will be no City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting on November 23rd, 2010. Can you believe it? We're already into Thanksgiving. Wow, it's going fast. We will adjourn in memory of Forrest Godey, who was a Valley icon and passed away on October 26th, 2010, at the age of 94. It was a life well-lived. He spent decades farming alfalfa, grain, and other crops in Antelope Valley. He was one of the founding members of the Antelope Valley East Kern Water Agency that brought in Northern California water to supplement Valley well supplies. He is a, was a devoted father of three, a man of deep faith, a successful businessman, and we are adjourning in his memory. We are adjourned until Tuesday, December 14th, 2010, at 5:00 PM, our next regular meeting. Happy Thanksgiving. And Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.